Two, all rise for a moment of silence.
Thank you. David, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Here.
David Hockmeister.
Here.
Ted Metzger.
Present.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed.
Present.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Weston.
Here.
Okay, first up is approval of the regular meeting minutes, August the 4th, and the special meeting, July the 28th. In reading them, I had one correction of a word, just one word, and I've already talked to Christine, and she's updated it. It was on the July 28th. Anybody have any corrections? Not? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve that correction?
Yes, and for both of them?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brad. Motion by David and second by Brad. Discussion, all those in favor? It's all seven of us, 7-0. Economic Development, Business Tax Phase-In Preliminary Resolution, Industrial Park Holdings.
Good evening. Steve Rowley, Economic Development. I sent my summary, my notes, which seems to have been working well, to everybody, so I will not go over the entire thing, but I certainly want to hit the high points. I am definitely excited about this project. It's one of the things that, when I took this position and met with all the council members, put some attention on the Northwark Industrial Park, was the only thing that was pretty much unanimous. And that's what this project is. And we've made some progress with two other projects breaking ground in the last two years. This would be the third one. Tonight, we're talking about Project E150. I am joined in the room by Paul Saunders, who is the CEO and owner, and he's happy to answer any questions that you guys have. This is a fantastic project, just going over the details that you guys have seen. It's 150,000 square foot facility, by far will be the largest facility built in the industrial park. It is about a $12 million investment. Their average wages are a little over $27 an hour. There are going to be 50 current employees that will become Warwick County employees and move to this facility. They're going to have five new positions immediately when the facility is completed, and expect to be at 75 total employees within five years. All of those numbers, wages and investment, score a 10-year real property tax phase-in. They are not asking for a personal property tax phase-in. This is also going to be their corporate headquarters. Economic Development Advisory Council unanimously approved this. This is also in the Northwark TIF, so the Redevelopment Commission has to pass a resolution. They passed a resolution unanimously in support of this project. You guys know from the past, tonight, we're here for the preliminary resolution. The next step after that would be rinse and repeat for next month and come back for the confirming resolution. I am happy to answer any questions that you guys have about the project, the preliminary resolution, or anything else.
Steve, I got one question.
Yep.
I'm gonna go put constraints on you.
Okay.
Three sentences or less. Tell me, what is it that is drawing this company to us?
What is drawing them to us? So, three sentences or less?
Yes. I know that's wrong.
Okay.
Challenge that.
They are landlocked and constrained with the facilities they were in, so they needed to expand. They, when looking at their business model, they identified Southwest Indiana as the right place for them to be. They all, so they've looked around the region. They also looked at Reno, Nevada, as another location to be, and through conversations, logistics, distribution, our location at I-69 and I-64, and working together with Warwick County, made this the right choice in our region to be here.
Thank you very much.
I don't know how many sentences.
I think it was great.
You know what? I'll call it three. You just make one or two.
There you go.
I'm like an attorney.
That's how I type, too, so.
A lot of semicolons.
Thank you.
Okay. If I have any questions? Is there a motion to read the preliminary resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And the resolution number would be 2022-11.
11, okay. Let's see. Motion by Brad and second by Ron. To read this preliminary resolution by title. And when we do this and make this vote, this will be us passing the first round, first reading. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
To be clear, passing this preliminary resolution.
Yes, thank you. Warwick County Council Resolution Number 2022-11. A preliminary resolution declaring an economic revitalization area for real property tax phase-in, Industrial Park Holdings LLC. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, questions? All those in favor? 7-0.
Okay, thank you very much. We will see you next month. Have a good holiday.
Thank you.
You, too. Thank you.
Thank you for choosing Warwick. Number 3A, additional appropriation. This is Highway Department for, out of local road and street, for gas, oil and lube, $150,000.
Good evening. Bobby Howard, Warwick County Highway Department. I'm just before you today. We've transferred 150,000 earlier out of equipment. I think I took a budget hearings that I had this additional coming up. I'm hoping not to spend it all, but this could cover through the end of the year.
Is there a motion for this one?
Motion.
Motion by Rick. Second by who?
I'll say.
Second by Brad. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor of the additional? That's all seven of us. Thank you. 7-0.
Thank you.
We have Salary Ordinance. Information Coordinator, Co-Mot B0, Information Coordinator, Co-Mot B0, and then Office Administrator, Co-Mot D, classification, $40,328 plus longevity.
And this Personnel Committee, we were waiting to get back, or to hear back from WES, and we did hear back from WES that it is going to move to a D. So that's new information tonight.
And Bobby, just in summary, this was a combination of two previous positions.
Yes, the Info Coordinators were two positions previously, and this will change to an Office Administrator. We had one leave, so I thought it was best to move this direction.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Does that include the transfer below?
Yes, it does.
Second.
Okay, so this is 3B and 3C together. That was a motion by Brad. Was that Rick that said second? And that is to approve the transfer from Coordinator, $8,044. Transfer to Office Administrator, $8,044, along with the previously mentioned salary ordinance. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. You, too.
Next up, Commissioner Business, additional appropriation, landfill post-closer, landfill expense, $2,100. This is something that comes up every year, that we have money in the bank bar that we're required to do.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any questions? All those in favor? 7-0. Thank you. Made your job easy, Heather. Next up is Handbook Policy Reimbursement, Transfers or Corrections. All items below have been checked for accuracy and can be voted under one motion. That would be the Salary Ordinance Correction Prosecutor Child Support. The bonus they get under a grant from Child Support Bureau. You got the information on that and how they rated, rated, R-A-T-E-D, it. The 4D Administrator, $7,311.60. The 4D Case Manager, the first one there is $3,387.60. And the 4D Case Manager, the second one, is $3,687.60. Is the Salary Ordinance Vacation Pay also coming under this?
Yes, I was getting ready to say that.
And also the Salary Ordinance Vacation Pay, three weeks vacation pay from the Building Commissioner, And should we do the retirees' salary ordinance?
Yes, please.
What was the amount? Oh, $2,656.25. That's retiree salary ordinance out of the Highway Department. So all three of these, that would be five, six, and I made this number seven. I don't know whether it is or not. So is there a motion for all three of them?
Motion by Rick. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. And any discussion or questions? All those in favor of all three? 7-0. Thank you. Next up is Other Business, and I believe perhaps, oh, you'll have something for us on this one. School Safety Officer's Budget.
If you guys note, I put on your desk, and I sent this email today, that we did hear back from the school corporation regarding the SROs and the amount that they're willing to subsidize or supplement to the county for SROs and vehicles. So that's in an email I sent today, and I did a spreadsheet on the numbers. So I thought maybe you would want to talk about, because out of personnel, we were waiting to see, because the sheriff had asked for four, we were kind of waiting to see what the school corporation was going to do.
Identify yourself, please.
Paul Cruz, Chief Deputy Sheriff.
Oh, I have a question for you. Outside of Boonville, how many schools are there? Are there 10?
I think it's a math question in there.
I'm sorry.
Seventeen total campuses in the county, so I think that would bring us...
Yeah, three and four, three of them in Boonville and four of them down. That's not counting Newburgh and Sharon, down around Castle area. There's Castle North, Castle South, Castle High School.
So high schools and middle schools, you said, are total campuses for school?
There's, I'm just giving you the count that I had in my mind.
So we've got four schools in Boonville.
Four right there together in the Castle area. Then you have three in Boonville, so there's seven. That means...
We have a total of 18 campuses in the county, so outside of Boonville city limits, it would be 14 campuses.
Okay, 14, okay. Since Boonville's going to provide their officers for all their schools.
Yes, my understanding is there intent.
I guess that's one, two, three, four schools, isn't it?
Yes, two grade schools, middle school and high school.
So that would mean, if there's 14 total, 10 outside of Boonville?
No, there's 18 total campuses.
18 total, okay.
14 outside of Boonville.
Okay.
We currently have five SROs, deputy sheriffs that are in schools. We're covering Boonville Middle School right now, which is Boonville's intention to take that as soon as they have manpower to do so. So then, if we add four additional school resource officers to what we have now, I think the way we had it figured, we would have the high schools, middle schools all covered on a full-time basis. Grade schools, we would be down to about two, two schools per deputy to cover. And then with the school safety budget, you give us $50,000, I think is our line item for that this year. Cover that with overtime. We try to cover as much as that as we can to fill those gaps as well.
Paul, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the sheriff had said with the increase that we were allocating for the overtime funding, that he thought there probably wouldn't be any issue with getting those deputies to pick up those additional hours, because the competitive, the competitiveness between what the pay at the schools compared to other outside organizations, that we were going to make that much more competitive than what it currently is.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
I don't think we have any problem filling those holes, now how quick we go through the money that's in that line. Do you have another question?
But I think we added, how much additional did we add?
We didn't add any additional, because he didn't ask to add additional to that line. We only double timed it.
Okay.
Right.
The additional we have added, am I right, is in our Public Safety?
Correct. You have, you have agreed currently to add one full-time school resource officer funded solely by the county. That's what you've agreed to so far.
And then the school corporation's proposal?
The school corporation is offering half of the salary of three SROs, half and, and their benefits, half of their benefits also, half of the uniforms and equipment for three SROs, and another additional vehicle. So that would be half of six, this total then, what they would be offering, would be half of six school resource officers, half of three benefits for school resource officers, half of three uniforms and equipment for three school resource officers, and two vehicles.
So I'm trying to get, what I'm trying to conclude is the total number that we can have out there if we do this deal with the school corporation.
Well, the way I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we had several conversations today. If you guys granted the additional, you've already granted one. If you grant another three, you would still be four short of having one at every campus. Am I saying that correctly? Now you've got to really think about it.
I had several different notes made on this, so...
That's what I wrote down from our conversation earlier.
And Mr. Richmond, just to follow up on your earlier question, that 18 campuses was the public schools in the county. It did not include the two, at least two private schools in the county, Evansville Christian and St. John's. But I think where Crystal was at, so, and then maybe back to the more recent question you had, with these other three, the school corporation's offering to fund half of, that brings us to a total of nine full-time school resource deputies. So if, it all depends on if the, if each of the cities and towns that have a full-time police department, if they, if they will cover the schools in their area or not, you know, as far as how the math works to, and the coverage works and, and all of that. So we did a lot, like Crystal said, we had several phone calls today and, and a lot of chicken scratch, and that's what I'm trying to make sense of here right now. But as it is right now, where we do have commitment from the city of Boonville, that they're going to cover their campuses in the city. With what we have there, five deputies would be covering nine campuses. So our middle schools, Castle North and South, Castle High, and Tecumseh would all remain covered full-time. And then we have nine more public school campuses that would be covered by five deputies. Five deputies would, would juggle those other nine campuses to provide coverage as best we could. I don't know if that answers your question or confusion.
And that adds up to my four that I said.
Yeah.
And if Newburgh and Chandler, which I don't know that they are, but if Newburgh and Chandler each provided one, that would mean we would need two more full-time to cover all schools with a full-time deputy.
It sounds like that that additional, that overtime incentive, we should be able to cover those additional two spots, barring what those other two entities were.
Yeah, if, if Newburgh Chandler, if I cover Newburgh Elementary and Chandler Elementary, then we've got seven campuses, seven public school campuses to cover with five deputies. And then, yes, so, you know, that's a, I had to sit down and do the math on the number of shifts we have, and what, and would depend on who was working at what rates, as far as what that price tag would be for that line item, to have full-time coverage. But we had a lot of discussion today, and I think it's definitely a step in the right direction here, at the very least.
And maybe when, when the council understands, since they did take them to double time, if they worked the overtime shift, you know, and he did not request any more money for the line, but possibly, you know, we could look at giving more money in that line to make sure that they are covered, if, if you get in a bind.
We shouldn't have, with, when you go to full-time, taking away some of the part-time.
That's what I said today also, yes.
And so that there's an understanding of what we're doing now, we're only covering two schools, two of the uncovered schools right now, per day. And then what we did was took the line item, we've got a set rate that we're paying it right now. I took that line item, figured out how many hours we had available, from the line item available, and I came down to, to a morning and an afternoon shift at two schools each day. So, and they're assigned randomly, so they're not always covered as it is, but they're covered more now than they used to be, so.
Did you guys meet with school corporation again, or just your conversations?
I, it wasn't my conversation. It was Mike's conversation with him this morning, and then he got with me and relayed everything they said.
Oh, this 100 and, was it approximately 110,000 they're putting in? Is that the 100,000 from the state that they're putting in, or we get another 100,000 from the state?
Nah, I can't answer that. I did not talk to Todd Armstrong.
I'm not familiar with that at all.
We're getting another 100,000 from the state, but for school resource officers. So is that where they're getting their money from?
Probably.
So they're putting up 10,000?
Probably.
Yeah, what was their total number? I thought it was higher than 100,000.
Well, their total number, if, the total number would be, for next year, would be 219,770 plus two vehicles.
That may be the gap that you're seeking right there.
I know there were federal grants available, and the president signed that one bill for school resource officers. And the state also has some grants available, and I told them to make sure they research and get everything they can out of the state and federal. I don't know whether they did or not.
I can't answer that either. I apologize. The sheriff handles the School Safety Commission himself personally, and I came in to pinch it today. Tried to come up to speed this morning, so I'm not 100% up. You know, we both try to take projects on so that we can truly devote to them, but it's, and not just both of us sitting to the same meetings all the time. So I can't answer to that for sure.
I'm not sure these grants are meant for local sheriff's departments. I think they're meant for the schools.
Right.
Correct.
So we couldn't help ourselves to any of these.
And I know he did explain that the school has, they're not, not all of the money that they have for school safety are they throwing at this project, that they have other projects in the name of school safety that they're looking to, to do in, as far as fortification and reinforcement of doors and other building security and technology that, that they can work towards. Obviously, our focus is an armed, trained deputy sheriff in each of the schools that we're responsible for.
And so my, my thought with all of this total project here is, I feel like us as the county, we're being responsible. If we need to allocate extra money for that overtime, I mean, we can review that when that process comes about. But I still think, I mean, we are being more than generous to the school corporation. If they feel like they need additional coverage in those areas, I mean, when you compare their budget to ours, it's triple what our budget is. So I mean, I think we're definitely stepping up to the plate. Plus, you know, we've also got to look at this jail expansion. Who knows? What if we have to add, you know, three to four new jailers? I mean, if you're looking at that, that's 70, if you call it $70,000 for a jailer, for jailers, that's two, I mean, you can do the math yourself. And real, that, whatever's left over, we're going to be into that in a hurry. But I think that's still going to allow us to provide that extra incentive and, you know, the conversation with the sheriff, and you can't, I'm not going to try to pin the sheriff down, that he's going to say, well, 100%, I know that I can get these covered by overtime. But I think after we see where these numbers are at after a year with this increased funding and what we're providing to the schools, I feel like we are stepping up to the plate and we're doing what we can. And I think, you know, I still think there's a majority burden that still needs to go to the school corporation, because these officers are in that school roughly 70% of their allocated time for the year. So I mean, I feel like we're doing our part.
So is that a motion to approve the other three?
I'll make that a motion, yes.
I'll second. I was going to add simply here before we, I guess it's a motion or a discussion anyway. We're having a discussion. So now we're in the middle of discussion and motions. Anyway, I say that I did talk to the sheriff today, called him just to kind of get his take on this, and while I believe you were in the room when we spoke, and both indicated, Sheriff Wilder indicated that he is comfortable with this. He basically said he doesn't know what a perfect scenario is, but he said that he's comfortable with this, feeling that we're doing a good job, you know, we're protecting the students and everything. And he also mentioned that the school corporation is putting other monies to other security items, you know, and I think that, I think that was a big factor in Sheriff Wilder's feelings about the whole thing, that we are doing our best to provide safe schools.
Yes.
So I was real glad to hear that you guys are comfortable with this. I know we also want to prove it, but it's a good step. Glad to have that conversation. Thank you.
And thank you to each of you. Talked to a few of you today, I think, so we appreciate that, too.
And don't forget, we have to vote on the motion.
We need a second.
All right, second.
Ron, second it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and the motion is that we pay to match the one half for the three additional SRO officers?
Yes, and I think this also, let me just, this is contingent upon the, because we are getting a contract for this.
Yes. That, I think you...
Did you speak to that at all, Cliff, or, or have you had any discussions about that yet? Because that was the initial conversations, was that this was going to be actually drawn up in writing going forward, so we wouldn't have our gentleman's agreement moving out of this. I think that's, I know that's the conversation to share with that as well.
Yeah, I just need to understand what the terms are.
Okay.
So, yeah, I understand the proposal has been put forth. Any other terms other than?
I'm not aware of any other than what's outlined in this document. Are you privy to this document as well?
Yes, this is Crystal's email?
Yes.
Okay, so my understanding is, what your motion is, it can be county paying for half of six resource officers, half of three benefits for school resource officers, half of three uniforms and equipment for two school resource officers. County paying for that is, can get the conditional on the school corporation paying for the remaining halves of what I just mentioned, plus two vehicles.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Or you could just make it easier, and, I mean, you can draw that up if you want, but you could just say, "School Corporation will supplement the county $220,000 plus two vehicles toward SROs." I mean, I don't know how you, you know, if you want to go into detail or not.
How specific you want to be.
See, Brad, you're a really good speaker. What we're actually voting on is half of an agreement. We need the other half to be agreed, if we can really commit to anything. Is that...
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's ultimately, I guess, I guess what we're given here is like our...
Right, but I mean, they did, in an email today, agree to these terms.
Then I guess we're good.
So, but, I think you need to direct Cliff to draw something up for the school corp and try to make an agreement, so we have it in writing.
Just for full disclosure, I represent the school corp.
Yeah, so will you be emailing yourself?
Well, yeah, I know. And I'm going to talk to the school corp to make sure that they don't have any issue. I don't see it as a conflict, because there is no conflict right now. If one party breaches the contract, that's a whole nother. The way that I see this as being is more of a memorandum of understanding. You're going to do this, they're going to do this, both parties sign it. So it's one level up of a gentleman's agreement. You know, so that's what I plan on doing. So I'll draft it, I'll send it to the council, so it'll be before the council, in theory, in the October meeting. And in the interim, I'll speak with Todd Armstrong, Dr. Todd Lamb... And in the interim, I'll speak with Todd Armstrong, Dr. Todd Lambert, and maybe even get it on their agenda, because they have two meetings, they'll have two meetings before your next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay.
Thanks.
I think we probably all still can consider supporting the private schools too, because I'd hate to see something happen to those kids too, at St. John's and the Christian School too. You know, so we might keep trying to find places that we can find monies for those too.
Would that be, is that the council's wish, that we cover that with the supplemental fund, the overtime fund? Add those into the rotation?
My motion's for what's on the table here.
Right, I just, I was just wanting to make sure that we didn't have a misunderstanding when I walked away from the podium.
And we need to check the legality of that too. I mean, I'm all for protecting them, but, you know, this is public money, private school.
Yeah, exactly.
Fine line.
I think those are good points, both from everyone there. And I'm just curious, what do the, what do St. John's do now?
I think, I think Newburgh Police, we don't, they're not in our rotation at all, and they're not in the random list, not that private schools are at this time, so. But Newburgh Police takes care of any issues that they have there right now, so. And then we will respond to Evansville Christian School, it's within our county and our coverage area, so we respond there as needed, when there's no one on-site servicing that school.
A school resource officer assigned to those two schools.
I think one of them may have it under his umbrella, but I don't, I don't know that there's a regular check in there or anything.
I'm just curious.
I know technically there's a motion on the table, but really, there's no final action tonight, because this is all contingent on drafting in the school.
I have to work this up in the budget, though.
Okay.
So we could have this contingent upon the agreement of interlocal?
I think I'll do more as a memorandum of understanding.
Memorandum of understanding.
I'd be pretty confident that they've submitted this to us, that it's going to get done. This is a lot more than some of our normal, where do you think we may go with this? But if they, you know, but if that's, so I think, I'm uncomfortable with moving forward.
Okay.
Here's what I can do. I can add it to the budget. In the next meeting, hopefully, we'll have it signed, and that is the public hearing. If we don't have it signed, I can withdraw it from the budget that night. But that way, we have the numbers in front of us, I can always take it out.
Then I like that.
And rather than add it, so, okay.
So actually, we're just adding three of the half salaries, three benefits.
Well, I'm actually adding it all, but they will reimburse us, yes.
But that's what we're paying for, though?
Yes.
Matching half, yeah.
What we're paying, or?
We're budgeting for the full amount, but then they reimburse us.
Excuse me, on benefits?
Half.
They're reducing, possibly repay us half?
Yes, they're going to pay us for three half salaries, three half benefits, three half uniforms, three half equipment, and another vehicle.
Okay, that ain't the way I understood it.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, a motion by Brad, second by Ron on the SRO officers. I'll take a vote on that. All those in favor? It's seven zero.
Thank you.
Now, we have final review, or do I need to adjourn this meeting first?
We don't, and we don't have anything to final review. If everything is looking good so far, I don't have everything completed yet. I will let you know, but we don't have to have the seven o'clock.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add?
It's passed.
Any comments from the public? I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brad, the second by Rick. All those in favor? Seven zero. This meeting is adjourned.